It being six twelve P M. I call the August two thousand and twenty-three Town of Clayton Planning Board Meeting to Order. For road call, board members Moore, Powers, Liskom, Dupree, and Williams are present. We have an excused absence from board member Bagley. Board members Applewhite, Spence, and Lee are not present. Will all rise for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands the nation under God indivisible, with its just as far.
You may be seated. Next item on the agenda is any adjustments to the agenda? Are there any adjustments to the agenda needed? That being said, we move to item three, approve other minutes. Did the board have an opportunity to review the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by board member Dupree.
Second.
Second by board member Powers. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is item four A, two thousand and twenty-three dash one-one-one dash R Z. Project Light Dust Resoning. We're now hear from staff.
Good evening Chair and other members of the board. Today the town is presenting initiated this rezoning to rezone this property here off of Ranch and Little Creek Church Road. From the R E Residential State Zoning District to the Industrial Light Zoning District. The property size is approximately sixty-eight point eight-three acres and currently is vacant. Current zoning here shows that is the residential state our lowest density zoning district. And it is surrounded by other residential estate, some B two neighborhood business and some R eight residential zoning district as well. The map below is the proposed zoning which would change this to the I one zoning district. Consistency and compatibility. The twenty forty-five future land use map shows this area being included in the employment center. The employment center designation encourages uses such as industrial warehouse, research and development, techs fleck, hospital, renewable energy, recycling, and others. Factors to consider when considering recommending this for approval to town council. Anything that can be permitted in the I one zoning district to be constructed on site will be permitted after this has been rezoned. Planning staff recommends approval based off of its alignment with the twenty forty-five comprehensive road plan in the future land use map. The planning board action now is to provide a recommendation for approval or denial to town council for its ordinance. Provided as a written statement or consistent statement and as a reminder, this is a public hearing and there may be those in the public here wishing to speak on the matter. Available for questions or you can open it up to the public.
My name is Alan Tu and I'm a lifelong resident of Clayton. I practice law here since August fourteen nineteen seventy-one. I'm intimately familiar with this property. And I would ask as a matter of having an accurate record that we have a copy of the life dust contract entered into the record for this hearing. The reasons are this. This is contested one on its own merits going through the report of the staff. I felt like I was reading something that I never saw most of the evidence to support the statements. It was like a work of fiction. The second thing is this with the contract involved and the property involved. You have two separate issues. One is spot zoning and the other one is contract zoning. The contract and I've looked at it is certainly a subject and part of it relates to the benefit and the detriments to all. And it bears close scrutiny. This is not the usual situation because you have the town as the owner of the property. Trying to do something that is self-serving. And you weigh the interests of the competing parties here and there should be a substantial. And I've got some citations from some of the implications and cases relating to this. So I would ask first that that be done. We had the director here who could readily provide you with a copy of that. I would ask that that be placed in the record, Mr. Pierce.
The economic development agreement is public record and when it was considered and passed by council previously. I don't know if it's specific to this that it needs to be a part of the record, but it's certainly available to the public. I don't, I honestly just don't know the legal, I don't know if in a rezoning situation like this if it needs to be entered in, but it's certainly a public record available to everyone. So.
Okay. Well, I would ask you to take notice of that as being a matter of public record. The first item of which is that the viability of the project is contingent upon this rezoning. So there is an inextricably intertwined connection between the town, its objectives, and the impact on the adjacent property owners. Now, let's start with the plan. The think action as is a part of it parks and natural resources implementation. This is a part of the overall plan. And goal PR three, provide all Clayton residents convenient access to a park within a ten-minute walk of home. There's no park in the southeastern quadrant of Clayton. This property was originally purchased from Deborah Massey and I was involved in the transaction. She inherited the property through from William Gaston Massey, who was a registered deeds in Johnston County for forty years. It was sold to the conservation fund by a deed that was recorded June twenty-seven, two thousand and fourteen. Using the transfer stamps on the property, two thousand four hundred and seventeen revenue stamps were paid, which would yield the property be so being sold for one point two million. And that's about eighteen thousand an acre. It was purchased specifically by the conservation fund to facilitate a park. It was sold to the town later on. I think it was within that same year or shortly afterwards for a park. Things have changed. I want you to consider one and the town has approved, the council has approved it. So I'm standing here and I'm thinking, well, maybe I'm just blowing in the wind. But the terms of the contract are to be considered, I think, in the benefit to the town of Clayton. It was so under the terms of the contract, it's to be sold for thirty-one thousand dollars per acre. Now, I've looked at all the documents, the contracts and an appraisal. The appraisal was cheap. It was quick. No one questioned it. There were comparables which I would characterize as incomparables, pieces from down towards Smithville and elsewhere. It ignored the fact, I think the negotiations began maybe in twenty twenty-one, late twenty and twenty-one and had moved forward. The sale price of the adjacent forty-four acres, which is two pieces. One is on the east side of Ranch Road at the intersection. The other is behind the African-American cemetery and the six houses that line the road there. Little Creek Church Road. And it was sold for, let's see, approximately forty-four acres. And it was sold for about eighteen thousand per acre, yield two point, a little over two million dollars. That was not reported in there. So you think about negotiating something and it doesn't seem like a good deal. You look then at the property that was sold, sold to D R Horton to develop R eight housing. They haven't developed it yet, but one of the things that will have to happen is that whoever develops that property will have to put in the lift station. That's a part of what's being done here. Well, that's really nothing. The town has this contract that is designed to develop it into six, approximately ten acre parcels to be sold and developed at the thirty-one thousand dollar per acre amount over an eight-year period to develop it. And it works like this, a spec company, a venture capital or somebody like that is the entity purchasing it. And they will buy and then build a spec building. And once it's either leased up or sold, it has to be an approved transaction, then they can go to the next one. The town is getting, is giving some adverbal tax breaks on the thing. It's not a lot when you look at it. So then let's consider what is in the recreation thing, having a park within ten minutes of a household. There's nothing there. All of the property that runs from this down to the, it's about a mile, a little over a mile to the bypass. Do you think you can replace that property for anything close to thirty-one or seventeen thousand dollars? You can't. So is that in the best interest of the plan? Part of the plan is for a work and life balance in the town of Clayton. So looking at the transaction and I urge you to do that before you make a decision and figure out, is this in the dominant interest of the town overall?
Sir, I'm sorry. I didn't think you were going to take that long.
I contest that as a denial of due process. This is.
I'm giving you due process, I'm giving you an extra minute to wrap up. I'm giving you notice, so part of due process is notice. So, so due process is notice.
I hear you.
Okay.
I will comply with your request. Contract zoning is applicable here. It requires extra, um, extra review to determine whether the government and the landowner enter into an agreement, which they have here, is the transaction benefits. One, you've got here the fact that this property is designated for specific use, that would be contract zoning. There is also spot zoning. Balances in the benefits, there's case law that addresses these. Chrisman versus Guilford County balancing the benefits questionable. Lots of other sites are available. This is not the only property available for this. There is a detriment going from one extreme residential, and if you look at the plan, the plan has low density and medium density there. This does not show on the map.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions from any member of the planning board? Mr. Powers?
Mine is not a question, but Mr. Two had mentioned at the beginning there, the, the land being acquired by the town from whoever had owned it first, last time, excuse me, with the stipulation that it be used for a park. And I can remember seeing that in the paper, when we had a paper, when, and you said in 2014, and that, that would be about the time I moved down here. I don't know the legal constraints on a property owner selling land to either a community or another, another company or person, and having constraints like that on it. Are they, can they be legally upheld? Or is it just, you know, I'm selling you this to be used as a park, and then after you get it, you can do whatever you want with it? That would seem to be a stumbling block right there. If, 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 if somebody can put constraints on what it's going to be used for, and I'm assuming the owner at that time was saying, that's the constraint, or else I'm not going to sell it to you. And if they did sell it, assuming, or with the assurance from the town that it was going to be used for a park, why isn't, why isn't the town, why is, why is this the first time I've heard that since 2014?
Your question, I believe, if I could just state it, is whether or not there are any legal constraints about selling the property? No, when the town bought.
Putting the.
Keeping the use.
Yep. Putting a specific use on the, on the property. It's, it's my property, I'll sell it to you if you make a park out of it and you buy it.
There's, there's no limitation on that.
Okay.
A representation as to why the town purchased it.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No, the only thing I think that we should do is put a fairness with speakers in the future, is that we should ask our legal counsel if we can, need to adopt, or we could adopt like a five-minute maximum, so future presenters would know that they have a limitation on that, and they would not prepare a longer presentation to the board. I think that would be something, that would be good.
There was no notice of any limitation whatsoever.
We don't have a legal counsel, do we?
Right. I can wrap this up shortly with one additional thing, if you will indulge me with all due respect. Thank you, sir. The comprehensive map was adopted in November, on November 15, 2022. And looking at that map, there's nowhere on there that shows an employment center or any sort of use that is other than medium and low-density residential. So to represent that it complies with the plan is in a gross error. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
My name is April Williams. I'm one of the neighbors adjacent to this par, property. I also have.
Could you state your address also?
I'm sorry?
Could you state?
6062 Little Creek Church Road. I also have.
6018 Little Creek Church Road.
And.
Lipskin knows me, I'm on the Pounds', remember?
Okay. Give me a second. Since this was not entered.
Both of you, when you take, you speak, could you speak into the mic? Okay.
I'm sorry. I had a copy of the zoning agree, or the economic development agreement with me, since that was mentioned in the previous gentleman's time. I was giving that so you can see the zoning requirement that's part of that.
All right, thank you.
Okay. What Mr. Two spoke about, about the spot zoning is a big issue. Supreme Court ruled on this, the North Carolina Supreme Court, during Good Neighbors versus the Town of Denton. The project was strikingly similar to what we're dealing with here with Project Life Dust, tract of land surrounded by residential and agricultural zones. In fact, all areas of this project are currently residential per the Clayton GIS. Also, all the surrounding properties are in the EJT without voteable representation on the town council. Zoning like this prompted the North Carolina Supreme Court to say that from their vantage point, there are precious few circumstances that could prove more detrimental to the surrounding county, community. The court also notated that the zoning authority cannot satisfy a clear showing of reasonable bias requirement simply by cataloging the benefits of the zoning change. Now, in this packet, you guys have a neighbor's response that goes concurrent with the applicant's response. I also included in there a draft copy of the future use, which Mr. Two's also spoke about. If you look on the last page of that draft copy, you will see that the Parks and Recreation still notate this property as being a park. The industrial zoning request is not consistent with the town's original comprehensive plan for this area. The project was added to the comprehensive plan after February 2021, when town officials began talks with Bio Realty, per the 662023 news article found in growwithjoko.com. You can see from the changes in the draft plans that the town officials added this project into the plan during the confidential discussions period, and prior to that, it's, as is still seen on the Parks and Recreation, this site was supposed to be a community park that benefits the entire town. It's also my understanding from deed book 4466, page 324, that the town of Clayton purchased this land from the conservation fund, and that per the Johnston County GIS, the sale price was $500. Unfortunately, those deeds have somehow been restricted. You can't go search for them. It's also a statement of fact that the town had intended to develop this as a park. Let's see, what else? I'm going into a lot of the code violations, if this was turned into industrial, including the fact that there is the requirement to promote preservation of environmentally sensitive areas, including 100-year floodplain, and I can tell you from experience, living on this land, that is within that 100-year floodplain during Fran. That entire creek down there went over 100 foot acrossed. Preserve in perpetuity unique and sensitive natural resources such as groundwater, which are used by nearby residents, floodplains, wetlands, streams, steep slopes, woodlands, and wildlife habitat, all of which are upon this stream or directly on this property. There is also preserving historical and archaeological sites. Arrowheads and trail trees have been found out there. Again, growing up on this property, I know this, because we grew up right next door. Protect prime agricultural land and preserve farming as an economic activity. Finally, as far as this, the creek abutting, this property joins into Swift Creek. Downstream from Swift Creek are endangered dwarf wedge mussels. You have a slide about that in there, a piece of paper about those as well. Now, there's already runoff causing issues for these mussels downstream. Now you're gonna take from 0% impermeable surface to 75% impermeable surface, adding pollution, sediment, and everything else into this creek where these endangered species are just downstream. And their biggest issue is loss of habitat due to degradation of the stream. I can go through time and time again, everything on here, you guys can read this, I've submitted it for your reading. Where is the last part I really want to tell you? We've got issues with sewage, oh, something else. There is no public electrics, there's no public sewage out there. These things are supposed to be out there in order for you to rezonate for the town. It's not out there. They're gonna have to add it. And that is unfortunately going to cause detrimental effects for all the neighbors around here. So number seven on the applicant says it's determined that no one property owner or small group of property owners will benefit materially from the change to the detriment of the general public. And I'm gonna say point blank, that's incorrect. The general public loses a benefit because the changing of, to I zone, removes the site from its natural state and the proposed park and greenway connections for the area. The park would benefit the community as a whole and satisfy the state constitution mandate to conserve wildlife that was just created in 2018. It would also fulfill the town mandate for protect natural resources found in the unified codes, ensuring that ordinance in section 1555.500A are upheld. The project benefits one entity only, Bio Realty, who would stand to make a profit from this rezoning. The neighbors and the general public are losing out on a promised park, and the local neighbors would also sustain a lower residential property value due to unknown chemical waste, possible sewage smells in vicinity, and other property values mentioned earlier. I'd also like to say that according to the economic development contract, there is no tenants for this property. These are gonna be empty buildings. They're gonna have to have two years to go out and find somebody to be on this property. So any idea of economic development is really just, what's the word I'm looking for? Really, I'm, I wanna say a pipe dream. Because you don't have a tenant, you can't verify how many, how much money the town's gonna make off this in taxes, because there's nobody there. It's just gonna be another set of empty buildings. Finally, to quote Joni Mitchell on The Counting Crows, rezoning this means you're gonna pay paradise to put up a parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Michael Williams. I'm April's husband, so we have the same address. I'm against it mainly because I've grown up in places where there was no place to really play as a kid, and we do have a son, and there's really nothing, nowhere for him to go out, out where we live. And a park would better serve the community than more just empty space. Because, I mean, you can look all over town, you can look all over the area, in Wake County, Johnston County, Durham County, there's plenty of places that people put stuff up hoping that somebody's gonna come in and fill it, and they sit empty for years and don't benefit anybody, except being a burden and end up drawing the kind of people you don't really want in town. And also for the fact of, like she was saying, with the sewage smell, that would greatly impact everybody around, especially with people who are gonna be sensitive to air pollution. One of the developments that you, that is being put in near us, right there at the forks at Ranch Road and Little Creek, they burned a lot of the trees that were there. I was stuffed up and having trouble breathing for weeks after that, and my son is an asthmatic. So that is a great concern of mine, if you do put in something like this. So, yeah, I'm completely against it, so thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Williams, I'm sorry, does any board member have any questions for Mrs. Williams?
I apologize.
Step down very quickly. All righty, thank you, I appreciate it. Anyone else like to speak on this issue? Yes, ma'am, come forward. Please state your name and your address.
Mr. Chairman, planning board members, my name's Marilyn Pounds Wall. This is my sister over here. This.
Could you state your address, ma'am?
Marilyn Pounds Wall. I'm sorry, 6026 Little Creek Church Road.
Thank you.
My property will be right next to this plant. We've got 11 acres out there, and I have horses on my property, and it's already impacted my property before it's even rezoned. Approximately two weeks ago, I had a surveying crew, they came out to my property, and I had no notification from the town of Clayton, and they were, I was assuming they were on the right of way, because my fence is, is back beyond the right of way on my property. And they climbed through my fence and went approximately 50 feet back into my property and set up stakes. And so I saw what they were doing, and I questioned them, and they told me the town of Clayton had sent them out there to do a survey that we had no notification of. They were doing a survey on my sister's property, and she was out of town at that time, so I asked them to please contact her before they did any more surveying. I called Mr. Poppy with, with the town electrical department, and he told me that they were putting electrical right of way across the front of my property, which will encumber my road frontage. And he said they were gonna put electrical pole right in the middle of, of my property in the very front. I have approximately maybe 450 feet across my property, and they were gonna put it right in the middle, and the same thing with my sister Gail. So that's already impacted me, that's something that I'm gonna probably have to end up fighting with the town, so that bothers me because I don't know what else is coming. The new road that's coming through at the other end of our property, we have approximately 65 acres there, the Pounds Farm, and they've already taken a nine-acre strip, and they put that road through. I have some pieces left, but they're having problems with some sewer out there, they're having problems with some water, with an underground spring that they've already dug up. So I don't know what other problems they're having now, but that's impacted our, our farm personally. We've had that farm in our family for 75 years. The neighbors that we have that's gonna be on the other side of this project, down Ranch Road and down Little Creek, or it's a historically black neighborhood, we've all been there, our families, their grandchildren, their children live there. And not only is it gonna impact our property values, but it's also going to impact our water quality. We've seen it all around with the other pharmaceutical companies that are here. There's new development behind our property that's impacting the streams now, because it's got runoff going into a natural stream that's been there for years. And our park would have been wonderful for all of us in that neighborhood, because we're probably the last neighborhood around the town of Clayton that has been predominantly there and hasn't really been affected by these type of projects. And we love it out there, and we try to be good citizens, and I think we probably have the last historically black neighborhood in this area around the town of Clayton. So I'm just saying I oppose it for those reasons, and I would really appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the presenter? Thank you, ma'am. Any other member of the community would like to speak on this issue? Thank you. Turn it over to the board for their consideration. Turn it over to the board for their consideration.
Mr. Chairman Moore, I don't think you ended up hearing from the applicant.
I'm sorry.
Good evening. Patrick Pierce, Economic Development Director. I'm using this. This is the presentation that was given to council on May 15th when this was considered. Didn't want to hit a few of the, a few of the high points here in terms of why, what the case was in terms of to rezone this to I-1 and the project life dust as a whole. So this property was originally envisioned as parkland when it was, when it was purchased. Does not have deed restrictions on it. We've gone through all the legal means to be able to do that. It was purchased at that point for $1.2 million at $18,000 an acre when the town originally purchased it. To my knowledge and all the research I've done, it was originally thought of to be baseball fields, which would have required significant cutting of that land because of the topography of that, this land. And in additional conversations, it was determined that this would not be the most cost-effective place to put a park. East Clayton Park is also about a six-minute drive here without the Ranch Road extension. So there is accessibility to those folks that live in the ETJ and other surrounding neighborhoods. So in terms of why industrial land, the last report that I had when I, when I did the May presentation, Johnston County was listed as number one in the Triangle Region for net absorption of light industrial land, meaning that when you build it, people will take it up because there's significant demand. If you look at the speculative building project on Shotwell Road, that was before, before it was fully, for certified for occupancy, was leased up over 80%. And that building continues to get interest, and there's interest around there as well. So from a demand standpoint, there's, there's demand for this product. And certainly with the other folks we have in, the other biopharma users we have in the area, there is a lot of interest in this kind of product there. And I encourage folks to look at the presentation that's available that they made in terms of how they have done these sorts of projects in other communities and the success they've had, and how that has benefited their community in terms of tax base. The last thing I would just mention on the future land use map, this was part of the, this was part of the comprehensive plan update. That was, I believe, December 2021, in which that went before council and was passed. It's consistent there, much of the area to the east, I guess, kind of to the top right of the map there. So kind of the east and north of that was already in the employment center. So this extended it slightly to there. It's consistent with all of those areas in terms of there's light industrial that abuts low density and medium residential throughout the town. That is a very common thing, very common occurrence throughout town on that future land use map. So that is, this is in no way inconsistent with that. I'd be happy to answer any other questions. I guess in terms of environmental regulations, this, like every project is required, is going to have to go through all the same kind of permitting processes and all, meet all the same things as every other project does in terms of meeting all of those. So there will be, this will be no different in terms of any other development, in terms of the process that it has to go through in terms of beating those environmental regulations. And with that, I think that's all I have in terms of my presentation here, but I would gladly welcome any questions from the board.
Any questions from the board to the applicant?
If the town ended up denying this, what would be the plan for that property?
That's a great question. I mean, it's, would have to probably go back to the, I guess, council would have to consider, and you all would have to consider, a different direction, maybe in terms of in the employment center designation, because this is consistent with the rest of that area. So light industrial would be not the only use, but it'd probably be commercial, I would guess, would be the other employment center designation that could go on there.
But you don't have a Plan B at this point?
I mean, the Plan B, I, we could go back out because of, because of the amount of interest that we have that, in terms of, we don't, we could have another Plan B if it was zoned industrial. If not, it would be likely have to go be zoned commercial based on the future land use plan, in which case we could go out and market at that in, in that way. In terms of industrial, you know, this project wasn't to go with these developers, which we have every faith that it will, because of the high demand and the high interest in this area for this kind of land and an opportunity like this. I don't think that we would have a problem finding another developer to step in.
This may be something you're not, you can't answer because it may just, I may be asking for your opinion, but if this were originally sold with the idea that it would be a park, and the people that sold it had that in their mind, and obviously they didn't deed restrict it, so it could only be a park, that would have been the time to deed restrict it, but they didn't do that. Do you think if the town bought it with that intention and yet did something completely opposite of that, that that might give people in the future who wanted to do something similar with their property in the town a reason to rethink that?
Maybe in the sense that they would want to deed restrict it to make sure that they have that. There's other deed restricted properties throughout the town that the town has purchased that make sure that there's an intent on that property. So, I mean, I don't think this was taken, you know, it was in that comprehensive plan, the previous comprehensive plan as that, as there was further analysis. I think there was a decision made that that would be, that would be better used for other purposes because what it was initially, as they went further into the analysis there, that it was not going to be, it wasn't going to be a cost-effective piece of land and wasn't going to yield what folks were looking for, which I think was, like I said, to my understanding, was to be ball fields. And because of the topography, the cost there to be able to do that, and then overall net yield in terms of the number of fields, that there are other opportunities to look for areas to be able to put ball fields on before that, that would be a better interest for the public and, you know, a better interest for the town.
Excuse me.
No, ma'am. Excuse me. Right now, he's, he's addressing the board, the planning board.
Okay. Thank you. You're addressing this as an employment center. And it, my understanding is from this evening that it only became an employment center two years ago. Up until that time, the town had, had owned this land for five years or so. And, and I don't know who or why, and baseball fields are nice, but parks are not completely restricted to ball fields. There, there are parks, walking trails, the, the East Clayton, a good part of that park is, is, is not fields. It's, it's woods with trails through it and everything like that. It's, it seems like from, from what I've heard from the people, if they were aware in 2014, and I'm assuming a lot of them were, that somebody, in essence, if it was, somebody said of $500 transaction, when I, somebody else said it wasn't that. So I don't know. But regardless of that, the transaction was to make it a park, and that, as I can remember that long ago, it was in the paper that, that this lady had, had, had offered this to the town as a park. Now, I can understand what you're saying, it's not legally restricted to that. But I would think the town would be leery of setting a precedent where they're agreeing with purchasing land from somebody to use it for something, and eventually they use it for something that's completely different. That, but that's, that's just my, my theory. I, I would not think that the town would want to get something like that stuck to them. But that, that was all I wanted to say about the employment center is, that's an argument now, but it just became an employment center a couple of years ago. So that's all I've got.
I guess my only comment there would be that going through the comprehensive plan process, there was an extensive outreach period and public comment period as well as consideration, I think by this board, as well as town council in terms of extending that area. So in terms of public comment and times to consider that, I feel as if that, you know, those opportunities have been had. And in the role that I'm in and of the department is to look at opportunities to both better the economic and the tax base of the town as well as community development. And I am an avid supporter of parks, and I'm an avid trail user of, of trails and such. But in having these conversations, and what got us to this point was a conversation that the original plan for that as there is more examination of it was not, it was an opportunity to purchase a piece of land and upon further examination in doing so, that that wasn't, again, to my understanding, was not the, was not going to work out as originally intended in terms of its use, in which case you have a piece of property that is owned by the town that is collecting zero revenue because it's a publicly piece of owned, you know, a publicly owned piece of property that then has an opportunity to then create economic benefit, which that economic benefit can then go back into things like parks, things back into public safety and those sorts of things. So taking a piece of land and utilizing it for those purposes and putting it back on the tax rolls seems like a, what is good for the community and, you know, redirecting that tax base to be able to go in to fund those other functions of government, which would benefit the entire town.
Board member, let's go. Do you have a question?
I'm going to vote my conviction tonight, and my conviction is going to be for voting against this proposal because looking, I'm looking at that, an aerial photo right now, and I'm looking at all the tracks of land that's already been developed in that area, and I don't see any replacement parkland personally. I'm not thinking about the next five years or next 10 years, I'm thinking about the next 50 or 100 years and assuming that we're all going to be here and there's going to be need for parkland. I don't really see how the town can replace that land for $31,500 an acre. So I don't really understand all of those things, but personally, right now, I feel like I can't vote against parkland. So that is, I just wanted to state while I'm going to make a recommendation tonight to, to deny the rezoning.
And let me say too, when you say, and I know what your job is as economic director, I know what you're, what you're supposed to be doing, and you're doing all those things. But to me, it's a very weak argument to say that a park doesn't financially benefit the town like a business would. I don't know of any park that's a big moneymaker unless it's Walnut Creek Amphitheater or something like that. I don't think there's any park in town that's got massive revenue coming in. So there's never going to be a moment where the park is going to be economically better, financially for money coming into the town than selling the property for something else or selling it for a business. We have approved a number of things on the 70 corridor. And one of the arguments that came up, we approved several things, and you, you know, it's farmland, and you push all these things out. We wanted the 70 corridor to be business, a lot of business and industrial development, and we have approved, I think, everything that's come before this board on the 70 corridor. But with the idea that, where are those people that live in those areas, where are they going to go? Where are they going to have to go off of the 70 corridor? Well, now, we're going off the 70 corridor and pushing people a little further out. In some cases, people that may not economically be as likely to be able to either A, because they've lived there a long time and they want to move out of their property, or B, economically not able to sell their homes and move somewhere else. So we'll make a motion here in a minute, but I'm, I'm voting my conviction too, and I'm, I'm agree with James.
If I could add just one thing here, I think that part of what attracted this piece of property to both from economic development and also the developer is the fact that you've got the Ranch Road extension coming through. So now you've got, you've got NC 42, which is now going to connect to an interstate, and you're going to have an interstate interchange that's going to be within, I'm going to say a mile or two miles, I don't have the exact distance there. So in terms of an area of town that you would want to prioritize connectivity like that, it would be to be able to put it near Business 70 and near a direct connection to Interstate 42. So I very much understand and am concerned about not wanting to push people places, but this is a major corridor that's also in the long-term regional transportation to extend it to a four-lane road. So this, this corridor in the future is going to continue to transition and transform where other corridors in town and other corridors in, in, in the periphery may not.
I just wanted to say something real quick.
Board member Williams?
I grew up on Ranch Road. I've lived here all my life, and I didn't realize it was historically black community over there. I know there's a graveyard there, but I think that, I'm going to be with the rest of guys here and deny this, but what I would like to do is take it back to council and see why you have to use all 68 acres of that, because there can be a partial where you can still do a park and do some commercial buildings there or something like that because the last three or four meetings we've had, people have the same concerns that you keep building, and all the runoffs are going into these screens, you got Indian reservations and things like that, that the water's been contaminated. So we, we want to take another look at this and make sure that all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed to make sure that the environment is safe as well.
Yes. I think I was, on one vote, I was leaning in favor into some of your justifications, and I think it swayed me with my fellow board members. Aesthetically, I believe in economic development, but I think we've done such a poor job. Every person that's, you use the Shotwell example, and every person that I've rode with has visited me up Shotwell Road, when they come across that white monstrosity right next to the road, and they'll look at me and say, who approved this? And I'm looking at them, I believe I was on the planning board when we approved this. Those warehouses right next to the road, I mean, they're sitting right there, they're so close to the road, this looks like a monstrosity, and you were bragging on it. And every friend I've had has said, who approved that warehouse space right next to the highway? It looks terrible. And I'm like, I approved it. And I believe in economic development, but it has to be smart. And we haven't done a smart job putting warehouses right next to apartment complexes, right next to the highway in the name of economic development, right next to neighborhoods. It has to be a fine line. And park space, I agree with them. A town can't grow. You can't, you can't say you want residence if you don't give them an outlet with beautiful green space. If that was intended for green space, I think we need to take that opportunity and develop it into a beautiful green space. The town of Gardner, I mean, Kerry just received $75 million for recreational space, an indoor recreational space, just to see how important recreation is. And I think the town of Clayton needs to understand recreation is important and really invest in recreation. And this is a piece of land that I think we paid, what, $500? Did somebody say?
I think we paid $1.2 million. We paid $18,000 per acre.
Yeah.
One, one side said $500.
Somebody said $1.2. But it's an opportunity to develop that land for its intended purpose and just do something great in the town of the Clayton. But the justification, I think, so far that you utilized versus the argument of the citizens, I think they made a more convincing argument tonight. So that's just my say, I'm just one vote. With that being said, I hear, take a motion from the board.
Mr. Chairman, I moved, we recommend denial of ordinance 2023-111-RZ for Project Life Dust.
We have a motion to deny ordinance 2023-111-RZ. We have a motion to deny ordinance 2023-111-RZ, Project Life Dust. Is there a second?
A second.
Got a second from board member, motion made by Board Member Liskum, I have a second by Board Member Williams. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is. I lost my place. I'm back.
Everybody's leaving.
Is that me legally?
Yeah, next item on the agenda is item 4B, 2022-125-CZM, Summer Glen Conditional Zoning with Master Plan. We are now here for staff.
Some heavy rain, yes, sir.
Yeah.
So this is a conditional zoning with a master plan here before you today. The applicant is requesting to go from RE, the Residential Estate Zoning District, to a Conditional Zoning District Residential. They're proposing up to 139 single-family detached homes with a density of 2.6 units per acre. The property is approximately 53.06 acres and the location is right there at the, along the intersection of Glen Laurel and Vincent Road. Here is a sketch of the master plan here. Test, is that better? Okay. So here we have a sketch of the Glen Master, Glen Laurel Master Plan here. You can see the proposed lots here for the single fam, 139 single-family units with the new connections off of Glen Laurel and Vincent Road there connecting to it. Some development data, again, the use is detached single-family. The zoning would be the conditional zoning residential and you can see that the nearby property owner, property is all zoned residential estate, which is our least dense zoning district. The proposed density is 2.60 again with a maximum units of 139. The water would be provided by the town of Clayton as well as the electric. Here we can, we see that the applicant provided some of the standard dimensions here. So propose, they're proposing 600, 500 square feet of per lot is the minimum lot size with a width of 60 feet. Max coverage for each lot is 70% with a max impervious of 70% per lot and a 36% impervious for the entire site itself. We can see that they also provide the setbacks here. We have a 20-foot front setback, a six-foot side setback, a 10-foot street-side setback and a 15-foot rear setback. Here we have the traffic generation, it's looking to create 1,370 daily trips, 101 a.m. peak trips and 135 p.m. peak trips. It's required to meet the developmental standards, storm waters, water, sewer and electricity. Project will comply with the town of Clayton stormwater ordinance, public water available along Vincent Road, existing public sewer available along Burke Dale Drive adjacent to the development, electric service available from the town of Clayton as mentioned before. Landscaping buffer requirements, the Class C buffer will be required with opaque screening and fencing around the perimeter of the development. This is standard in all conditional zoning residential proposals and the interior landscaping and street yard requirements will have to meet the Unified Development Code's requirements. The open space amenities, it's required at least 25%, which would be 13.25 acres will be reserved as natural resource conservation and open space. Due to the fact that there are no public greenways in close proximity to this development, the frontage widening will provide sidewalks on the side of the property for the length of the frontage in order to connect pedestrians. As far as architectural standards, they're providing the master plan, but we'll go over those a little bit too. Here they're proposing that each home be one to two stories. They'll have exterior color packages for variety. The siding, they're proposing premium vinyl, combination of premium vinyl, lap siding, shake, board and batten. The facades will include masonry columns along the front as long with front porches and covered soups. They're proposing four-vehicle parking, side roof eaves with a minimum of 10 inches, architectural, architectural style shingles with side or rear patios available for those who would like that option. Consistency with adopted plans in the town, the 2045 Comprehensive Growth Plan calls for this area to be medium dense, should be low density, actually I apologize below, it says low-density residential. The area provides for a growth density of one to three units per acre, so the 2.6 is in line with that. But 25%, so the growth plan does allow for up to 25% of the area to be used for single-family detached homes. There are no attached homes in this proposal, they're all detached. So the density meets this envisioned standards for the growth plan. Suitability for the subject property, current zoning permits low-density residential uses and is surrounded by residential uses as well. The Perdidos Conditional District permits low-density, like I mentioned, attached and detached development as well. The applicant is proposing to connect to public water and extend public sewer to serve the development. As far as approving balances of uses and meets specific demand in the town, the area is comprised of residential uses that will help meet the housing needs for those, looking for those slightly larger, for the single-family homes. The proposed condition allows for additional suburban-style single-family detached units nearby. Capacity for public facilities and services, the school developments proposed will be served by Powhatan Elementary, Riverwood Middle and Clayton High. Clayton High is on the 2022-23 CAPS school list for Johnson County, the other two are not. For road developments, will be accessed off of Glen Laurel and Vincent Road. As far as parks and recreational facilities, they'll be providing open space as far as that goes. Wastewater treatment, sewer will be connected to Burke Dale Drive through utility easement along from the News Country Club. Development from the, subject to town waste, town wastewater allocation policy as is standard with all conditional zonings. And public water will be available and connected from Vincent Road. Stormwater drainage will be developed and will follow the town stormwater ordinance. Legal purposes of zoning are not contrived and we feel that all ordinances procedures will be approvals, approvals will be followed. As far for adverse effects, the developer will generally match density and unit type of the surrounding developments. Improvements to existing public road networks, especially connectivity and public utility extensions will help mitigate impacts, but that doesn't mean there will be no impacts. No one property owner or group will benefit. With imposed conditions, we don't see any stronger, any strong negative impacts for the general public. We do have a list of approval criteria for master plans, that is compliance with Section 155-20L and all other applicable requirements of this chapter or analysis of justification for deviations. Consistency with the general, Clayton's general design guidelines. Conformance of proposal with stated purpose of requested conditional zoning district. Compatibility of proposed development with adjacent community. Quality of design and ability of overall development plan to ensure a unified cohesive environment at full build-out. Compatibility relationship between each component of the overall project. Fiscal impact of the proposal, providing adequate bicycle pedestrian links within the development and with adjacent community and effectiveness for which proposals protects and preserves ecologically sensitive areas. Staff believes the applicant has met this criteria, the master plan narrative and proposed conditions. Considerations for the planning board, you shall make a recommendation to town council. This shall include a written statement of reasonableness and consistency. Planning board may make recommendations to be added or removed, but the applicant must agree to these recommendations. Conditional approving zoning district master plan and narrative will be recorded with Johnson County if approved and will run with the land. Staff does recommend approval of the Summer Glen Conditional Zoning District and master plan, subject to the four recommended, 14 recommended conditions of approval. First is an electric copy of the master plan and narrative excluding conditions of approval shall be submitted to the planning department for final approval. Two, development shall meet all adopted Town and Clayton Unified Development Code requirements. Town and Clayton Engineer Stormwater Design Standards and the North Carolina Fire Code, NFPA Fire Standards, except where specifically modified by the approved master plan. The development shall be constructed in substantial performance with the master plan and master plan narrative as approved by the Clayton Town Council. Four, all parcels subject to the conditional zoning and master plan shall be annexed into the town prior to any subsequent development approvals. Developer will be required to pay their proportional share of the Wilson Mills Fire District capital debt to the town prior to the effective date of the annexation. Six, and the use of development shall be limited to single-family detached residential homes and any allowed residential accessory uses within the Town of Clayton's Unified Development Code. Number seven, the following standards shall apply to the development. Max residential units, 139. Max density, 2.6 dwelling units per acre. Total impervious of the entire site, 36%. Minimum lot size, 6,500 square feet. Minimum building setbacks, front 21.5, setback from the sidewalk 25 feet, side setback 6 feet, corner side setback 10 feet with a rear setback of 15 feet. The building's maximum height shall not exceed 35 feet. The Town of Clayton shall be the ledger provider for the project. Nine, tree protection fencing must be installed at the clearing limits to maximize preservation of existing vegetation. Ten, a gated emergency access with a Knox box meeting the Town of Clayton's fire development standards connecting the cul-de-sac on Summer Loop to Glen Laurel Road shall be provided. Eleven, required frontage improvements along Glen Laurel Road and Vincent Road will be made in phases that correlate with the driveway connections to those existing roadways in the perspective phase. Twelve, the following transportation improvements in accordance with the recommendations in the TIA will, and approval by the NCDOT shall be constructed prior to the approval of the final plat for the first phase of development. Their improvements include improvements along Glen Laurel and Vincent Road intersection, Glen Laurel Road, proposed site driveway, Vincent Road, proposed site driveway. And the following architectural standards shall be required to be met for the single-family houses. All units to be one and two-story with a variety of brassman colonial transitional themed elevations. Home plans at the same elevation should not be side-by-side or directly across from one another. Exterior color packages will enhance variety of color throughout the neighborhood that will not be duplicated side-by-side. Side elements to include a mix of premium vinyl siding with varying patterns such as lap siding, shake and board and batten materials for architectural elevations. All build facades to include a variety of brassman columns with masonry, square or round columns per elevation. Each home will have either a front porch or a covered soup element with a front lead walk that connects to the driveway. Four-vehicle parking spots spaces will be provided on each lot, two-car front-loaded garage spaces with decorative garage doors and glass windows and carriage details with two parking spaces on the driveway. The side roof will also have the 10-inch overhang eaves and all front facades will require to have a 20% masonry element such as stone brick accents of the portion of the house excluding the garage doors. The architectural style shingles will be used, side or rear patios will be provided on all units of outdoor living as well as optional covered porches available per plan. And finally, 14, to the extent of any conflict between the master plan, master plan narrative and these conditions, these conditions shall control. Here is the statement of reasonableness and consistency, should you decide to recommend this to the town council. Staff is available here to answer any questions, the applicant is here to present to you as well.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? No, sir, not you, sir. Talking for the planning board, members of the planning board. Thank you. Written now here from the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Thank you, Bruce, for that presentation. I just want to thank you all for the opportunity to be here and present on behalf of Summer Glen Development. So on behalf of our project development team. So our project development team is Wakefield Development, Brett Mangum represents them. I'm Andrew Stocks from Stocks Engineering. If you need our address, it's 801 East Washington Street, Nashville, North Carolina. Transportation is represented by Exalt Engineering, surveying by Bateman Civil Survey and our environmental consultant is Sage Ecological Services. The developer, Wakefield, and I'm the only ones here this evening. So this is a general overview of our project area. So the project consists of five different properties that are located near the intersection of Glen Laurel and Vincent Road. And the acreage of the combined properties is 53.06 acres. The project is located in the town's ETJ and is currently zoned residential estate and is the designation of the Low Density Residential in the 2045 Comprehensive Growth Development Plan. The properties will be annexed into the town limits prior to any subsequent development approvals and will pay the proportional share of the Wilsons Mills Fire District capital debt prior to the effective date of the annexation. Here's an aerial of our site plan with our proposed sketch. The proposed master plan includes 138 single-family detached lots. The density of these lots in relation to the project area is 2.6 units per acre. The low-density residential classification of the 2045 Comprehensive Growth Plan is three, equal to or less than three units per acre. So the Comprehensive Growth Plan describes the gross residential density and defines this as the number of dwelling units divided by the total project area without subtracting areas devoted to open space, road right-of-way, parks, et cetera, stormwater control features, et cetera. So we are well within that three units per acre at 2.6 units per acre. The low-density residential designation also suggests a minimum of 25% open space. The proposed master plan currently includes approximately 34% open space and since the project was in the water supply watershed described in Section 155-501E1, this restricts, would typically restrict the project to a maximum of 36% impervious and this criteria will be met on our project as you will see on our developments standards chart where we have specifically described as a maximum of 36% impervious. There were, within the application, there were several seven approval criteria for the rezoning and 11 for approval criteria for the master plan. The responses to these approval criteria were provided in the application and expanded upon in our master plan as well as in Mr. Venable's presentation as he went through those criteria. I will hit a couple of the highlights that are shown in our master plan regarding these criteria. Number one, the consistency with the adopted plans for the town. The Comprehensive 2045 Growth Plan Future Land Use Map labels this area as Low Density Residential. The current zoning is residential estate and the growth plan represents LDR as equal to or less than three units per acre and a minimum required open space of 25%. The proposed Summer Glen Project has a proposed density of 2.6 units per acre, which is achievable by conditional zoning with master plan and will provide approximately 34% open space. The site is within the watershed, which would typically limit the density to two units per acre. However, the Development Code, Section 155-501E1, allows exception to this criteria with high-density site if the development remains below 36% impervious for the entire project area, which we will meet. The project will provide the required infrastructure and utility improvements to accommodate the development by extending water, sewer, electricity, public roads and by following any recommendation from the TIA and the North Carolina Department of Transportation in review of the traffic impact analysis. The proposed rezoning does meet the intent of the Growth Development Plan. Number two is the suitability of the subject for uses permitted by the current versus proposed Conditional District. The proposed development consists of single-family detached residential homes, which are allowed in the current residential zoning. The approval of the conditional zoning would allow higher density than allowed in the current zoning. However, there it is consistent with the current zoning surrounding area and the proposed density is also consistent with the 2045 Growth Plan. Number three was whether the proposed changes tends to improve the balance or uses or meet specific demands of the town. And being consistent with the 2045 Growth Plan, the proposed development is cohesive with the development in close proximity to the project area. There's high demand for residential development in and around the Town of Clayton and this project helps meet that demand, increase the town's tax base and improves the town limits and as well as the infrastructure network with water and sewer extension. Number four is the capacity of adequate public facilities and services included schools, roads, recreation facilities, wastewater treatment, water supply facilities and stormwater drainage facilities. Are they available for the proposed Conditional District? So schools, the proposed development will be served by Powhatan Elementary, Riverwood Middle and Clayton High School. It was mentioned that Clayton High School is on the CAPS school list for this year. What that means according to the school district's website is they will still accept students that live within that area, however, they're not accepting transfers from other districts. So we do not feel that that is a negative impact to this area. With the roads, a traffic impact analysis, the TIA has been performed. With the roads, a traffic impact analysis, the TIA has been performed by Exalt Engineering and has been reviewed by the North Carolina Department of Transportation to determine if there is adequate roadway infrastructure to serve the proposed development. The developer has agreed to construct any required roadway improvements resulting from the TIA and subsequent reviews by NCDOT. NCDOT's congestion management section has required left-turn lanes with 100-foot of storage at each of the three intersections. The striping for these turn lanes have been found to be what is required and will fit within the frontage widening criteria that is required in the town's ordinance. The frontage widening along Glen Laurel and Vincent Road are shown on the master concept plan, and the frontage widening will meet the criteria of the 3C cross-section per the transportation guidance documents. And it is, it will come up later in the presentation to show you a cross-section of what that is. Recreation facilities is the next item. The proposed development will consist or will provide community flex open space and is located approximately one and a half miles from East Clayton Community Park. The developers have also been in discussions with the Newt's Country Club, which is where we will connect to our sewer, about access to their amenities as a part of being a homeowner in this development. Wastewater treatment, the engineering design team has been working with the town of Clayton's engineering department to determine that the downstream sewer lift station in Glen Laurel subdivision has adequate capacity for allocation and additional lift station and available capacity at the wastewater treatment plant are ongoing with the current improvements to the wastewater treatment plant. We believe the timeline of this project will coincide with the completion of that project to provide sewer to this development. Regarding water supply, the proposed development has proposed connections to the town of Clayton's existing water in Burke Dale and also in Vincent Road. Johnson County has public water in Glen Laurel Road. However, we will not connect to the Johnson County lines, but will provide additional two connections to the town's water lines with additional loop to provide better water quality in the system. Stormwater drainage facilities, the proposed development is within the Newt's River Basin and will require stormwater management for water quantity and quality before leaving our site. Stormwater runoff will be collected by street curb and gutters, above-ground swells, and then will be directed to an underground storm drain system where those pipes will discharge to stormwater control facilities on-site. These stormwater control facilities will treat pre-development or post-development runoff to meet or exceed and be lower than the pre-development runoff conditions, which will protect the downstream adjacent streams and the properties that the streams abut. We will also, in those stormwater ponds, treat nutrients, total suspended solids. The nutrients will be nice for doing an phosphorus removal that will meet all of the town and state's criteria. Condition or criteria number five would be that it has been determined that legal purposes for which zoning exists are not violated. The applicant has followed the procedure as outlined in Section 155, 203, Part 3, and 155, 705. All town of Clayton processes and procedures have been and will continue to be followed throughout our rezoning process. Number six is it has been determined that there will be no adverse effect upon adjoining property owners such as, such effect can be justified by the overwhelming public good of welfare. It's our understanding there will be no adverse effects upon adjoining property owners by this project. Further, the proposed development will be expanding the public utility system, providing additional loops in the water system, which has the potential to increase water quality and the water lines and increase water pressure as well. It's been determined that no one property owner or small group of property owners will benefit materially from the change or to the detriment of the general public. And it's our understanding that this project produces no detriment to the general public, and the public improvements will benefit the town of Clayton and the adjacent property Specifically looking at the master plan, there are also some zoning or approval criteria for the master plan. Those were also covered in Mr. Venables' presentation and were very straightforward answers that we did meet all those criteria, and I'll save your ears and my voice instead of reading through all of those again to skip that section. So far, there have been three meetings that members of the public have been able to discuss their thoughts or concerns or ask questions about this project directly to the development team or through the Board of Adjustments at a variance hearing. Two were specifically related to the variance hearing, and one was specifically related to the conditional zoning. In each of these, there were consistent concerns from the adjacent property owners and surrounding neighbors with perimeter landscape buffers, stubs to adjoining properties and traffic. As a development team, we have spent expensive time discussing the solutions to these concerns and ways to address these problems. We have also spent time with town staff discussing how and where perimeter landscape buffers can be maximized and how we can eliminate stub roads to neighboring properties to address concerns by the neighbors about future development coming their direction. We understand that the town's Unified Development Code, Section 155, 400, Section I, requires stubs, so we still have one stub to an adjacent property, but we have done our part in eliminating unnecessary stubs that the neighbors wanted to avoid. We believe that we have gone above and beyond in having opportunities for the community input while still striving to address their concerns in ways that are feasible with the scope of our project as well as the remaining compliance with the town's Unified Development So during, our next section will be discussing the Unified Development Code in ways that our project may differ from what is currently there or the existing current zoning. So during the construction drawing review process, extensive time will be spent by us, the development team, and the town staff to ensure the plans meet the intent of the code with the following modifications to the code as requested in the master plan. This section will also include language regarding the discussions we've had with the neighbors and town staff regarding the, in using the existing vegetation where possible to meet the requirements of the landscape buffer criteria. This will help minimize the project clearing limits for us as well as provide a mature landscape buffer for the adjoining property owners as quickly as possible. The chart here shows the difference between the current zoning, some adjacent property zones, and the proposed conditional zoning. You will notice that the minimum lot size and the minimum lot width are greater than some of the other surrounding zones, and the main deviations from these other zones are the maximum impervious areas and some of the setbacks. The proposed density is also lower than what is currently allowed in the RE zone, which is 3.7 units per acre. Our proposed is 2.6. We are requesting to increase the impervious area allowed on the individual lots, but limit the overall site impervious to 36% of the full site. This will allow for larger homes to be built than allowed in the R10 and the R8 zone while providing smaller lots. Although the front setback is 20 feet, there is also a condition that's in our conditional zoning regulations that would require the garage setback to be 25 feet from the sidewalk. Since the sidewalk is not at the right-of-way line, that would provide enough room for a vehicle to park or two vehicles to park in the driveway side-by-side without encumbering the sidewalk. With our public utility extension, the property is classified as an infill development due to the location of existing facilities. The water and the wastewater allocation policy is where it defines that as an infill development. Sewer will be connected to Burke Dale through a utility easement from the Newt's Country Club. That easement is already in works and has been obtained from the Newt's Country Club. Water will be connected to the town of Clayton Water and Vincent Road, looping to Burke Dale Drive through a utility easement from the Newt's Country Club, and the development will be a town electric customer. Our public streets, our proposed development has one connection to Vincent Road as well as two connections and an emergency access connection to Glen Laurel Road. The development properties surrounds a non-lot subdivision, the Oak Grove subdivision, that has right-of-way that is dedicated as public right-of-way. However, the roads have never been accepted by NCDOT for maintenance by their department. Per conversations with the town's engineering staff and NCDOT, we are not proposing a connection to Tanner's Way in that subdivision. And our proposed plan meets the recommendation from the engineering department regarding that. The emergency access to Glen Laurel has been included since we do not have enough property frontage along Glen Laurel to install an entrance that is in alignment with Palmer's Way. That Palmer's Way is the entrance to the Glen Ridge subdivision. NCDOT has denied a full access at that point because a full access would create a misaligned intersection, which is a dangerous intersection to the public. The proposed master plan and associated conditions also includes the 3C frontage widening along the properties portion of Vincent Road and Glen Laurel Road. One of the general zoning conditions will be to construct the associated frontage widening with the corresponding phase that fronts the streets requiring that widening. The NCDOT improvements are listed here. Each entrance will have an exclusive left bound or a left turn lane into the development with 100 feet of full width storage and in the appropriate tapers required by the NCDOT. Here is an exhibit from the 2045 Comprehensive Growth Plan that has been adopted as the transportation plan as well as an aerial of our project view on the right side. You can see how the Palmer's Drive, which is in the red circle on the right picture near the top left, is kind of skewed to Glen Laurel Road and how it's extremely difficult to tie out that way. And then we do not own the property directly across from that. We only own a small sliver, which is near the south side of that intersection. Here is a cross-section from the town of the 3C widening. The 3C frontage widening would include a center turn lane, two directional lanes, one each direction, a bike lane, curb and gutter, a grass strip, sidewalk, and then it would tie down to the existing grade with a daylight section. Per the UDC, we will be responsible for our portion of these improvements only for the portions where our property fronts the road and only for the side of the road that we are on. This is an aerial overview where you can see the blue markings along Glen Laurel Road and then along Vincent Road on the left side of the picture, which is the north side, where we would be providing the frontage widening. You saw a brief picture of our conceptual elevations in the previous presentation by Mr. Venables. Including the master plan narrative are several of those conceptual elevations. There are conditions to avoid the same elevations being adjacent or directly across from the street from one another, as well as conditions requiring premium vinyl siding and masonry elements on the front facade. Here's two of our conceptual elevations, the Arietta, the Concerto, and then two additional is the Melody and the Grace. I've also included in our presentation a list of the architectural standards that were previously in Mr. Venables' presentation. So again, I'll spare you from reading those. There's 10 architectural standards, and then our general zoning conditions that were in his presentation as well. There are 10 different general zoning conditions. As Mr. Venables stated, the town staff has reviewed and issued the TRC certification for this conditional zoning on master plan and master plan narrative. The TRC certification letter was written on August 10th, signed on August 15th, and provided to us on August 24th. And then the staff recommended conditions were provided to us by the town plan on August 18th. We agreed to all those conditions that were in the staff recommendation letter, and we signed the document and returned to the town on August 23rd. I'm available for any questions if you have any questions regarding our project or presentation.
Any planning board member have a question of the applicant?
I did not see where there was any steep slopes on your map, and I'm assuming those have been taken into consideration, and there was not any conflict with the proposed lots.
Yes, sir. There will be some steep slopes. They're just not required to be shown on the plan at this stage of development. So this is very high level with the master plan just concept. And so as we get farther into the design and receive our full topo on the site, we'll be then be able to analyze what truly are those areas. That's not something that we've gotten that far along in the design on since we're just going through the conditional zoning, but we will take those into account.
But you don't think at this time, you don't think it's anything that's going to reduce lot count or anything?
I don't think it's going to reduce the lot count. There was a stream buffer that kind of divides the property that then backs up to some of the subdivisions that are in Oak Grove. So I know there will be some of those steep slopes and other buffers, environmental concerns along that section, but we think we're backing up to those where we will not have any impacts to loss of lots.
Any other, on your setbacks?
Yes, sir.
On one graph, you had 20 feet, and then in another part, you had 21 and a half feet. What is, what would be the setbacks for the housing?
Let me verify what is shown on the. I think I also noticed that in your presentation, Bruce, and I'm not sure which, our master plan shows 21 and a half feet.
Okay. Now, will you have sidewalks on both sides of the subdivision or on one side?
On both sides.
On both sides?
Yes, sir.
Now, on the 21 and a half foot setback, is that from the?
The right-of-way.
That would be from the right-of-way?
Yes, sir.
So from, and the sidewalk would be what, 10 feet from the edge of the sidewalk? Would be from 10 feet from the right-of-way or?
I think the back of the sidewalk will be three and a half or four feet from the right-of-way. So the three and a half plus the 21 and a half will give you the 25 feet from the back of the sidewalk to the garage.
When you say the back, you talking about the edge closest to the house?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So that'll give you about 25 feet?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. That's, that's a lot better. But thank you. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah. I apologize for that miscommunication there. We'll make sure it gets cleared up.
All right. Thank you.
It does appear to be correct in the conditions that the applicant has signed, the 21 and a half feet.
Okay. On that graph that Bruce presented, it had 20. Do we have any member of the public would like to speak on this issue? Yes, sir. Please come up. Name your name and your address.
My name is Stan Jones. I live on Vincent Road right next to where these subdivisions want to be. The gentleman answered some of my questions, but I was just wondering, has the DOT, Department of Transportation, have they determined yet, yea or nay, on the possibility of a stoplight in the intersection of Glen Laurel and Vincent Road?
Yes, our traffic consultant has told us that there is a proposed traffic light there. They will be provided by NCDOT. Will not be a requirement of this project, but they're planning to install it.
Thank you. That was my question.
Any other member of the public would like to speak? Yes, ma'am?
Good evening.
Please come to the mic first. Could you bend it down a little bit?
Good evening. My name is Paula Sanders, and I live at 557 Wildlife Parkway. Right in the corner where that stoplight is, they propose stoplight. Hopefully, they'll put one there. That road is Vincent Road. I live right on the back of Vincent Road. It is so crowded every day with all those cars, schools down in that way. Are they going to widen that road any?
Yes.
On what side? Because you'd be taking some of my property if you do.
We will not take any property.
So what I saw on that, Joe, sketch you had, my house is right there in the back and where you turn, it seemed like you was, you had the sketch, if I can show you, but it seemed like you was on the other side of the road, really. You went on the blind side of the road.
Right on the project area.
Okay. So and then you said there was going to be a cross-section? Is that where the cross-section is going to be?
Yes.
Where it'd be four, two lanes going one way? Am I looking at it wrong?
I mean, one lane going each direction. Let me grab this right here.
All right.
So there'll be a center turn lane, one lane going each direction, a bike lane on each side of the road, and then a sidewalk behind the curb. And then we will only do our half of that section in front of our property.
Okay. All right. I think that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other member of the public would like to speak? I have comments on this issue. Hearing none, I'll turn it over to the board for their consideration. If not, I hear, I entertain a motion to either recommend or not recommend 2022-125-CZM Summer Glen Conditional Zoning with Master Plan. 2022-125-CZM Summer Glen Conditional Zoning with Master Plan to the Town Council. If there is a motion to recommend, please include the recommended statement of consistency and reasonableness.
Don't make me do all the talking on this. I make a motion to recommend 2022-125-CZM Summer Glen Conditional Zoning with Master Plan and find that the statement of consistency and reasonableness is here. We find this rezoning action to be generally consistent with the future land use map and adopted 2045 Comprehensive Growth Plan, and we find this rezoning action reasonable and in the public interest because it supports go LU1 and LU3 of the 2045 Comprehensive Growth Plan by encouraging growth in appropriate areas and providing a range of housing types and lot sizes to meet the needs of various income levels, family sizes, and ages.
We have a motion to approve by Board Member DePree. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Powers. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion passes, thank you. The next item on the agenda is any new business? Is there any new business?
No.
Or any? Next item on the agenda is any staff reports? Bruce?
Good evening, Chairman, Planning Board. My name is Jonathan Jacobs. Many of you have not met me before. I'm the Assistant Engineering Director for the town and as of last Monday, also the interim planning director in lieu of Ben's resignation and last tape being last week. So you will be seeing me quite a bit more here over the next few months as the town recruits for a permanent planning director.
Thank you, nice meeting you. All righty. Next item on the agenda is item six, informal discussion and public comment from the planning board. That being said, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move we adjourn?
Motion by Board Member Liskam.
A second.
Second by Board Member Williams. All in favor, say aye. We adjourn.
Thank you.